I'm in the call door of this Lacey City Council meeting on February 28th, 2019. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we do have one amendment to the agenda. Item B, under the Business and Occupation Updates under Section 12, City Manager's Report, that actually needs to be moved to Section 10 ordinances, and it'll be presented by our City Manager, Scott Spence. Given that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda and consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the amended agenda and consent agenda items.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. We have an agenda. And first up on our agenda, under Public Recognitions and Presentations, is a presentation from the GFWC Capital Women's Club. Please come forward. And just as a note, the Capital Women's Club, Women's Club is one of our recipients of the Washington Center that we give out for a nonprofit.
Good evening, honorable council members and Mayor Andy Ryder of Lacey. I am Nardine Matsuda, President of GFWC Capital Women's Club of Lacey. Beside me are the Chairman of our upcoming fundraiser, Virginia Sableyn, and Deborah Peterson, and more of our members from our club. GFWC Capital Women's Club are here to thank you for selecting our club, a nonprofit organization, and 501(c)(3), a free day usage of the Washington Center for the Performing Arts. It gave us the opportunity to hold a fundraiser event for the Seattle Children's Hospital Uncompensated Care Fund on March 16th, 2019. We are partnered with the Seattle Children's Olympia Bargain Boutique through its manager, Chris Schultz. Thank you. We have flyers for you if we have your permission to hand them out to you. No, you go ahead.
Oh, do we have your permission?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Give it to me.
With time permitted, we want to tell you about our club. We are GFWC Capital Women's Club, a member of the General Federation of Women's Club Washington State, and General Federation of Women's Club. GFWC Headquarters is based in Washington DC since its formation over 128 years ago. We are the largest international women's organization of volunteer women in the nation, with over 80,000 members in affiliated clubs in every state. We are dedicated to community improvement by enhancing the lives of others through volunteer We, GFWC Capital Women's Club of Lacey, was chartered in 2004. Our club has been actively serving this community for over 15 years. We hold our monthly meeting at the Lacey Fire District Number Three on Franz Street. We have been before you, a little history, in 2009 for your approval to post our club sign on Pacific Avenue. Thank you for your time for us to say thank you and tell you a little bit about our club in that we are a nonprofit organization whose mission is to serve and try to make a difference in our community. And so, I'd like to ask if our Chairman would like to say anything?
I'm the Lacey resident that was awarded the free use of the Washington Center. I'm new to this area, having moved from San Diego approximately two years ago, well, it will be two come May. I was very impressed when I would get my utility bills to get a notification in it of some really unique things that I never had in San Diego, and one of them was this offer of utilizing the Washington Center for a nonprofit organization. So, I jumped on it right away. I told Nardine about it and the rest of our club members because we had a very special fundraiser in mind that we hope to make an annual event. I just retired from over 35 years in the medical field. My specialty was interventional cardiology, specifically electrophysiology. That's the electricians of the heart, not the plumbers. I was in cath to start out, but... So, things that benefit hospitals, especially pediatrics, I worked in pediatrics as well, is very near and dear to my heart. I worked with Seattle Children's Hospital on numerous occasions in my medical career. I provided training to the cath labs and the electrophysiology labs up there, so I had a really good relationship with getting to know Seattle Children's Hospital, a really phenomenal hospital. When I found out that the GFWC Capital Women's Club supports the Seattle Children's Hospital in a way of, variety of means, this is just one type of fundraiser coming up for their uncompensated care fund, which covers the costs for children and families from all over the world, not just Washington, not just Olympia, not just Seattle, but all over the world. I was quite impressed. So, I wanted to make sure that we got involved in this, we want to make this an annual event, and we want it to grow bigger and bigger each year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to thank everybody here for giving us this opportunity. This will be our first big event for our club, and we're not only going to help Seattle Children's Hospital, but we're also going to help some of the community projects that we support locally, homeless backpacks, scholarships, the Thurston Food Bank. So, the event will be very important for us and for the community, and I just say thank you on behalf of the club. Thank you.
Thank you for all your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And so, next up is the Administration of Oath for our new Chief of Police.
Is kind of Ken Semko coming to the podium? Perfect. So, as council knows, we went through a nationwide research for our next police chief, and Ken Semko is now the fifth chief in Lacey's police department's history. We think we chose a winner. We're very excited to have Ken here. Ken came from the city of Santa Monica. He'd spent 27 years there for his law enforcement career. His last position was as interim police chief. Again, just getting to know Ken here in the last few weeks, great enthusiasm, the department's excited, I know council's excited. Ken has a lot of things to do to meet with the community, but he's going to be a great addition to the executive team and to the police department, so we're very excited. You know, kind of interesting, our city was incorporated in December 5th, 1966, and one of the very first things that they did, the council did at the time, was form a police department and subsequently hire a chief. Now, it took four more years for a city manager, I don't know why, but...
[laughing]
We are thrilled, though, to have Ken as our police chief, and as tradition, we like to do the oath of office on basically the city council meeting on TV. So, I'm going to call up Dave Schneider, we're going to do Administration of the Oath of Office.
I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Kenneth Semko, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
Truthfully, faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Truthfully, faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of Chief of Police.
Perform the duties of the office of Chief of Police.
Of the city of Lacey.
Of the city of Lacey.
In and for Thurston County, Washington.
In and for Thurston County, Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. And if Lisa Semko can come up here and do the honors. It's a lot harder than it looks, if you ever put on a badge, so... Well, thank you very, very much, Mayor Ryder, members of council, and our community. I'm extremely honored to be your Chief of Police, and I'm very much looking forward to continue to build on the foundation of community trust and support that's been developed under our prior chief. He's here for a long time, and I'm looking forward to building on that and working with all of you. And I'm humbled to partner with you and the community and this great organization, and specifically the incredibly talented men and women in the police department, as we move your police department forward into the future. So, again, thank you very much. I'm extremely honored to be here, and I'm looking forward to working and meeting all of you. Thank you.
Well, it's good to see that we haven't scared you off after a couple of weeks. So, next on our agenda is public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to stress the council on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Next up is ordinances, our business and occupation updates. Scott.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, as you know that we have a business and occupation tax within the city of Lacey, sometimes not the most popular way to levy revenue for the city of Lacey, but traditionally, we have not charged warehousing, distribution, or manufacturing. We found an omission within our code that actually is somewhat silent on that, and that could be interpreted as that we do tax for those, but in practice, we have not. So, before you tonight is an ordinance that will actually rectify that and actually exempt warehousing, distribution, and manufacturing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, can I get, do I need a motion to approve the ordinance? Can I get that motion?
I move that we approve the ordinance updating the LMC to meet current practices of collecting BNO tax.
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion? So, it's an interesting way how this came about. Actually, the city of Olympia was sort of doing a presentation on comparing Lacey and Olympia and the region on several different BNO tax and other issues, and it came up that the city was charging BNO tax on this, and I knew for a fact that we were not, and so it kind of went back and forth and kind of find out, we did some research, and it didn't specifically spell out that we didn't, even though in practice, we had all this whole time, and so this is actually sort of a roundabout way of making sure that we fixed that and set the record straight. So, that's one of the reasons why we're here today and how we found out about this. Even though we've always practiced it, it wasn't specifically spelled out that we hadn't.
So, this is housekeeping?
This is housekeeping.
Yes.
Councilmember.
I don't see it referenced. Where am I missing it?
So, this, we changed the agenda at the beginning to, so this was going to be under the City Manager's Report. We made this under ordinances, so that's, if you look down under the old City Manager's Report, you can find it there.
Thank you.
It's been amended.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to approve this proposed ordinance updating the LMC to meet the current practices of collecting BNO tax. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next is the Mayor's Report. So, as you know, we usually give out, you know, council assignments for boards and commissions, committee reports, and we reaffirm that every year, and we sort of do it every couple of years. Councilmember Hearn was appointing to the Lodging Tax Advisory Board when I stepped down from that board a couple of years ago, and that is actually spelled out in state law, it's a three-year term, and so that three-year term actually just is about ready to end, and so I will be recommending that we appoint Councilmember Hearn back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Board to serve a full three-year term. That's my recommendation. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Member?
First of all, thanks for recommendation to reappoint. I appreciate it, it's an honor. Lodging Tax is a fascinating group, committee, because it's comprised of not just a council member, but members of the business community and the community at large, and we have the privilege of dispersing tax revenues that are already collected from hoteliers to redistribute for things like economic development, to seek to refund this, but also community events that revitalize and lift up the community as well. So, it's a fascinating committee, and thank you for the opportunity to serve on it again.
No problem. Is there any other discussion? It's been moved in second to reappoint Councilmember Hearn to the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Now, on to the City Manager's Report.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have two items before you. The first action item is a donation action to Homes First. You will recall that we have property at 4406 26th Avenue, which is for a future lift station, and right now, that timing of the project is such, it'll be two to three years before we build that lift station, so we've taken that residential dwelling and actually have worked with Homes First, and we put a family that was facing homelessness from North Thurston Public, or family that attends North Thurston Public School, and they're now currently being housed in that. Homes First noticed that there is a shed on the property that at this time, we have no need for, because at some point, we're going to have to remove that house, and so they could use that shed for another property that would also assist low and moderate income families, so our recommendation is to donate that shed to Homes First. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You may recall, this item went to the General Government Committee on January 22nd, and they recommended approval.
I move that we approve the donation of a shed currently located on city-owned property to Homes First.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Come somewhere.
Just that it's a fantastic preservation of resources, dealing with the, one of the top priorities of our city is, you know, homes, and it's just a great move to be able to do that, and basically without cost to the city. Fantastic.
Great. Any other discussion? Councilmember?
I think it's a great repurposing of this, and can't think of a better organization to receive it, so I'm strongly in favor.
We all agreed on the General Government Committee, too. It's been moved in second to approve the donation of the shed currently located on city-owned property to Homes First. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
So, the final item before you is a bid award for the Lebanon Street Extension, and Public Works Director Scott Egger will provide the information on that project.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and Council. Staff is recommending award of Public Works Project PW 2019-11, the low bidder act of construction from Pewalp in the amount of $613,613. There were nine bidders on this project, we had good competitive bids, there are 70 working days on this project, and project is scheduled to begin in early April. Engineer's estimate for this was $760,000. As I mentioned, the low bid was around $613,000. This is for the connection of Lebanon Street, that's, I think, all near and dear to your heart, near the future museum site, which will connect Lacey Boulevard and Pacific Avenue. So, it's about 350 feet long, and the roadway will be 25 feet wide, curb gutter, landscape strip, sidewalk, illumination, and then also some water and sewer to go along with it. Just for the record, I'd like to note that the apparent low bidder was deemed non-responsive. One of the documents required as part of their bid bond was not included in the cement package, so we then deferred to the next low bidder, which was act of construction. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
I'd move to award Lacey contract number PW 2019-11, the low bidder act of construction incorporated from Pewalp, Washington, in the amount of $613,613 and zero cents.
Second.
It's been moved in second to award this Lebanon Street Extension to the apparent act of low bidder, act of construction. Is there any discussion? Yep.
As usual, I always like to mention the Lacey contractors that put in for bids, so it's great to see our local businesses in the competitive bid process.
So, I just want, this is kind of an unusual circumstance. There was an apparent low bidder that was $25,000 less than this, but they didn't have a complete packet, and so they didn't have the packet that showed that they were bonded, insurance bonded, and so when that happens, we have no choice but to reject that, and so there was a lower bidder than this, but their packet was incomplete, and so I just want to make sure everyone understood that. Councilmember?
Thank you for bringing that up, highlighting that, I appreciate it. So, you say we have no option but to award it according to, you know, the rule of law, but do we have the option to decline the bid altogether and open the process?
Yeah, absolutely, but that's highly, I would not recommend that. You'd be wasting staff's time. In addition, all of those bidders who, you've been wasting their time as well, they've put in time and effort to put their bids together, and then you would be asking them to rebid when they already know that, you know, the bids that have been put forward. So, that's highly, well, I guess I would not recommend that.
Thank you.
I would mention, too, because the engineer's estimate was $760,000 plus dollars, and...
Still way under that.
Yeah, we're way under that, so we're getting our money's worth, for sure.
I agree. I just want to make sure the council totally understood what was going on there, so I know Public Works Director did a good job explaining it, I just wanted to go into it a little bit more. So, it's been moved in second to award this Lacey contract number PW 219-11 to low bidder act of construction from Pewalp. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, now on to standing general committees. First up is the Finance Committee, and this will go pretty quick. Our first item of the day, we met back on January 22nd, was the Business and Occupation Updates, which we just passed, so we're done with that. The other issue that came up, it was, I think, something maybe a lot of this council might have been notified on, there was just a really sort of a unique circumstance where there was a landlord had a rental down here that was been unoccupied, and the landlord had turned his water off at the water meter, but apparently, what happened was there was a, some theft that happened, someone broke into his house, and we notified them when we thought someone broke into the house, but what the person, the owner didn't realize was they went out and turned the water back on at the water meter, and then left all the water running in the house. And so, then, of course, the city gets notified of a huge water bill, and then we notified them again, and the owner was in this weird circumstance, said, "Well, can you, can we have relief from the water bill?" Like, it was a leak, you know, on, we have a standard policy where if you have a water leak or something like that, we notify, we can reduce that bill by half. This was an issue that kept on going back and forth between this landowner and the staff and the council, and the staff did make a recommendation not to reduce the water bill, but the General Government Committee at the time realized all this work that went back and forth, it was kind of a very bizarre circumstance, and so we had recommended that we allowed the owner to take the deduction like it was a water leak, and so I fully understand we put the staff in a kind of a very difficult position here, because they're just trying to follow our rules and regulations, and this is not pointed out under our rules and regulations, and so their staff is just trying to do what we want to do as a council, but I think all three members of the General Government Committee said, you know, "Let's just put this behind us, reduce, give them a one-time reduction, and go forward." And so, that was our recommendation, and I think that's what's happened, right? Because it's been, has the customer paid in full now?
It's been addressed.
Okay, it's been addressed, so...
How much was the bill? I'm just curious.
It was over $1,000.
It was about, I think, all said and done, it was about $1,800, $1,900.
And you reduced that by half?
We reduced it by half, so... So, that was the Finance Committee. Next up is the General Government Committee.
So, the General Government Committee met January 22nd, and the thing that we talked about on donating for Homes First was on our agenda, so we obviously have passed that. We also discussed the council travel policy, and, excuse me, I'm going to cough. So, the change language from, we did a few changes, such as we changed the language from one local and one national conference to two conferences, and then we included language that outlines the use of reserve funds, and the proposal states the reserve funds will be distributed amongst all council members to cover any travel shortages as needed. That the reserve is the travel account, not the major reserve funds. Additional travel requests will be presented before the General Government Committee for recommendation to forward to a full city council for approval, and the recommended changes will be drafted and presented to the committee at their February 26, 2019 meeting, which they were, and then moved forward to the full council for review and approval. That's my report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Next up is the Land Use Committee.
Okay. Land Use Committee met on January 22nd, and our sole topic was the branding for the Woodland District. We spent a long time delving into this. The plan is to rebrand the district, was a result of the 2013 Woodland District Strategic Plan and the 2018, or 16, Lacey Form-Based Code. So, the goal is to create a place that leverages existing assets, attracts new investments, residents, and users to achieve the goal of long-term planning effects on this area. So, we went through a series of presentations of ideas about names for it, the identity that we're looking to create. We talked about, you know, the strengths of the district, which would include St. Martin's University, the South Puget Sound Community College, and Economic Development Center, Chamber of Commerce, the Lacey Veterans Hub, and new private investment that's going on within the district right now. The vision for the district includes, you know, mixed-use center with like 18-hour-a-day vibrancy, we're hoping for restaurants and entertainment, business investment and employers on both state and private investment side, higher ed, residential and service commercial uses, and public spaces. We didn't exactly come to total agreement in the meeting, so the project's going to be added to a future work session of the council for further discussion. And that's my report.
Thank you. So, next up is Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. First, the Transportation Policy Board originally was, had to be rescheduled from our normal Wednesday meeting because we had the Snowmageddon event, so we met actually last Friday, February 22nd, and we just managed to have enough people have quorum, so it all worked out. people have quorum, so it all worked out. We had election of officers again, and I was once again elected as Chair of the Transportation Policy Board. I think this is my sixth year as Chair, so, which is a little unusual, obviously. That somewhat rotates. The Transportation Policy Board, though, has kind of a longer tradition of the Chair sort of representing the policy board for a longer period of time. Pete Komet was the Chair before myself, and he was Chair for quite a long time as well. So, but the other item, as I think I reported out last time, we elect a emeritus business representative, Doug DeForest, who has been with the Transportation Policy Board as a business rep for 16 years, I mean, for a very long time. He is no longer really qualified as a business representative, but we want to keep his knowledge on the policy boards, so we created a new position as emeritus business representative. And so we completed that term. But the majority of the time was spent with an update from WashDOT on the State Route 510, the Yelm Loop, which is something I think hopefully a lot of people in this area have heard about because it's been talked about and been discussed for a long time. Actually, as the presentation went on, this was first showed up with Yelm stating they needed a bypass through their downtown in the late 80s. And so you fast-forward to this timeline, the state actually picked it up and put it into, and selected it for a priority mobility and congestion relief study in the year 2000. And so here we are, all these years later, they finally got through the first phase of this and applied for additional funds through the transportation package, the same package where we received the funds for our interchange 111. And so the one thing that's interesting about this is as they have had to mitigate this entire route that goes through Yelm, and most of it is in their urban growth area, actually, for the Mazama Pocket Gopher. And things have changed along those lines on the rules and requirements for that. And so they have originally had some, a land bank set aside to help for that mitigation, and that was outside of this area, and they thought that was going to be able to satisfy those needs. But come find out, the new rule says that they have to mitigate within the same area. And so they're currently looking to, for property, I think they need about 50 acres or something like that, that they need to buy to mitigate for the new bypass that will be going for the second phase. So the Yelm representative to the Transportation Policy Board, of course, was not happy with WashDOT and how long this has taken, and he's brought up some other concerns, and I think they're all understandable. But of course, WashDOT has to follow the rules and regulations from the state and from the federal government. And so we're sort of beating up the messenger in this case. So we had a long discussion about that, but it looks like it's on track, even with the new, having to find a new mitigation, it's not going to hold them up. They have budgeted for this, and so it is on track, and it looks like it should, the project should finally be completed by about 2023. It was really interesting, they took a drone and was able to fly the whole route, so you can, and they had an overlay that showed where, what the route will look like. And so it was really interesting to see then how this new technology has really been used as a tool to help show, you know, describe these projects and show what it's going to look like. And so that was our.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So the transferred development rights, how close to the area does it have to be?
So, yeah, so how they did is they break it, the prairie is broken up into different sections, and so the section where Yelm is at is a defined section, and it's been, there's a sort of a boundary that's been made. And so they have to mitigate within that same boundary. And so it's one of those new things that, you know, we have to think about when development is especially happening in the prairie habitat now, which is a lot of South County, is a lot of prime prairie habitat. So this is a sort of the new reality that we're in. And so what we've done, though, is we're requesting the Thurston Regional Planning Council and Transportation Policy Board to see how this issue is going to affect other transportation-related issues in the South County going forward. And the staff is going to look into that and sort of let us know. So that was that agenda I am. The other agenda I am was to, there was a request from the City of Tumwater to reprogram some federal funds that was granted to them through the Transportation Policy Board in 2018. They had won about $657,000 in federal surface STP grants, funds that would put a new roundabout on Old Highway 99 at 79th Avenue. And so those are sort of use-it-or-lose-it funds, as I've talked about. It's a new sort of change that Washington State has implemented. And so whenever a jurisdiction receives these federal funds, they have to use it on the years that we program it. And if they don't use it, the region will lose it unless there's a backup plan in place. And so, again, there's an issue with Tumwater meeting the requirements for the Mazama Pocket Gopher, and that's holding up this roundabout. And so until sort of the county squares away their habitat conservation plan and figures this out, they don't want to go forward because they don't know what the requirements are going to be, and so there's a level of uncertainty here, and they don't quite sure that they can make it or not. And so they are requesting to move those, that funds into two separate projects. And so one of them is a resurfacing project that made a lot of sense, other one was a sort of a future planning project of that entire Highway 99 corridor through there, which will get them to some design standards as well. There was some discussion within the Transportation Policy Board where that, that they didn't think this was a good use of these funds. All I, as the Chair, what I said is, "We have no problem reprogramming these funds, but once it comes time for this project to go forward, they're going to have to reapply and try to find funds through, you know, another source." We're not going to guarantee they're going to get the $667,000 back automatically through the STP funds that we're allocated every year. But the Tumwater understood that and agreed, and it passed the Transportation Policy Board to reprogram those funds. So that's been the majority of that entire meeting between those two items. And that is my report. Deputy Mayor.
So the Joint Animal Services Commission met yesterday, February 27th, and there were three business items on the agenda, as well as an update to the Joint Animal Services current cases. The reserve policy was discussed. It was suggested to have a two-month reserve to cover any future downturn in the economy that might affect JazzCon. And this is in addition to our current two-month reserves for emergencies. There was a discussion about our strategic planning work plan. The very first one was done in 2014, but it didn't lay out any steps to move forward or plan at when they will occur, and some of them are outdated now. So we'll have a more vigorous discussion next month and try to make it more of an actionable type of strategic plan. And then we discussed the schedule for interviews for our four finalists candidates for the JazzCon Executive Director, and that will be held March 7th. And for all of you out there, there will also be a meet and greet scheduled for the 7th from 5:30 to 6:30, and if you're interested, please come. It'll be held here. And after the event, the Board will adjourn to executive session to talk about strengths and weaknesses, and then provide that information to Lacy's HR staff, which will, is the official hiring process. So, and then lastly, some of the cases that were reported by Jazz, Joint Animal Services Enforcement Officer include, after working with Tumwater Police Department, a case involving a chihuahua that was killed, and another dog that was not the person's, but somebody else's that was injured, it resulted in a conviction of first and second degree, and the prosecutor is asking for jail time, hopefully for 30 days, and we'll see where that goes. The cat mutilation case seems to have gone cold, but there's still a $53,000 reward for information that leads to arrest. The third case was a bestiality case in Tumwater, which you probably have heard in the newspaper a while back, and that has actually escalated into child pornography case and was sent to the federal prosecutor to handle. And then our lead officer, Erica Johnson, is also writing up two dog neglect cases, which I also believe is in Tumwater. And that's my report, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Cox.
Okay. The agenda actually shows my name with Rachel's committees. If you'd like me to go now, I can for mine, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, my.
Yeah, it's just, it's wrong on the agenda, so.
She's on there twice.
I see that.
Yeah.
So.
Rachel to go now?
Rachel, you want?
I don't have any reports.
Well, perfect. Yeah, she doesn't have reports, so.
There we go.
I knew that, I could sense it, so.
Okay, and Councilmember Greenstein's not here.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess this is a good time to announce, Councilmember Greenstein is out of the state right now for business, so his absence is excused. Paul Enz is here from our Chair of Planning Commission, thank you for being here, and Troy Kirby from Park Sports here, so thank you. And so, Councilmember Hearn?
So my singular report tonight is more announcement, if you will, of our Race Against Trafficking 5K, which is coming up April 27th. I'm going to pass out another flyer to folks. If you already have one, of course, you can share it with the community. And if I may, I'd like to give a few extra out so our guests could receive a flyer. This is our annual fundraising effort whereby we seek runners and offer recognitions for many things, like fastest, but also largest group, things like that. We also seek sponsors, commercial sponsors that would like to help with the fight against human trafficking, and then, of course, be recognized at the event and join us. And that's available now until about April 6th, so we have a packet for that. And most importantly, the funds raised from this event go towards providing free training and education, mostly to, well, a large degree of it goes to schools and staff, but last year we had a very successful effort to hoteliers and things like that. And the training happens when there's no costs involved, so that's, we're racing against human trafficking and raising funds for that kind of training. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
No report.
Now, Councilmember Cox.
All right. I have two meetings to report on. The Community Action Council met last night, and we went through a number of things, including the annual client survey. They had over 3,000 responses to this survey, primarily from people who actually came to the Community Action Council offices for services. Very interesting results. We approved a motion last night as well to set the top three priorities for the agency for the coming year, and those are housing, access to medical care, and hunger. Those will be the big focuses. There was also a report on the impact on prosperity in Washington State from the CAC, and the impressive statistic, I think, they touched the lives of 7,876 families and helped more than 18,514 community members move toward lasting self-sufficiency. And that just, I was really, really touched and impressed by that. Also, it looks as if we're going to be extending our reach on the weatherization program to include Click Attack and Skamadia Counties, so it's getting to be a larger effort there. And just a little follow-up, I announced at the last report on this group that they're establishing an emergency fund with United Way, and United Way recently created a fund to try to help federal employees who were in seeing a hard time with the federal government shutdown. So the report on that is they were able to help one employee, so I guess one is better than none, but at least the agreement is in place for the future needs that may come up for that. And then Inter-City Transit met on the February 20th, and we received a report for 2018 on the Dialogue Lift Program, the Travel Training and Bus Buddy Programs, all of which were very successful for the agency. And then the design team from StanTech, which is a consultant that is helping us with redesigning the Patterson Street facility, gave us an overview of what's coming. We're going to be building new administration building, we're building a new bus washing facility, and trying to make the best use of that very crunched and crowded property because we've got way more, you know, vehicles now than we have room for, and it's quite a challenge, so that's coming along very well. And then we received a debrief from General Manager Ann Freeman-Monceneras on how they handled the big snow event, and it was pretty impressive how they were managing to keep rolling despite all those odds. That's those, and then the other two groups, Regional Planning Council is meeting tomorrow morning, and our Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Affordable Housing will meet on March 14th. And that's my report.
Great, well, that was a quick meeting tonight, so we try to go as quick as we can, so this is a quick one. I just want to say it's been, it's been a kind of a tough couple weeks. We, you know, we had the big snow event, and it seems like whenever you have something that's unusual, it always creates some uncertainty and creates some tension in our community. I just want everyone to know that, you know, this council works extremely hard to the best we can to provide services to our citizens in the most fiscally responsible way. And so I want to, again, want to commend the public work staff for the great work they did, and I know it's always difficult when something unusual comes up, and everyone has different expectations of how local government should respond to that. But I think we did, under the circumstances, we did a great job, and I just want to, again, thank Public Works and all the great people. I want to welcome, of course, the Chief, you know, here as well. I know you will do wonderful, and you're a great addition to our community, and we were really looking forward to, you know, working with you and supporting you as much as we can. And so we've reached the end of our agenda, and just remember, you keep it classy, Lacy. I'll call this meeting adjourned. And I'll call this meeting adjourned.